I'd like to call to order the meeting of Mayor and Council. I want to thank everybody for being here and those online if you will rise for the invocation by Councilman King.
I'd like to pick up our heads, please. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we just, we thank you for this, this beautiful day that you've created, Lord. Just thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight and the opportunity for us to serve our community, Lord. Lord, be with us tonight and guide our conversations and discussions and give us the much-needed wisdom and knowledge to deal with the issues at hand. And, Lord, at the end of the day, it's about you. We just give you all the praise and glory and honor that you deserve, Lord. Just continue to keep our city lifted up, our county, our state, Lord, and our country. We need you more than ever before. We ask all these blessings in your wonderful and glorious name. Amen.
Please, man, stand for the pledge.
Our diligence to defy the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. As a reminder to council, we're going to have an executive session tonight after this meeting. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, you've all received the minutes from our last meeting. If there are no questions or comments, I'll accept the motion to receive the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman King. Do we have a second?
Councilman Henderson, a second.
Henderson, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, it's unanimous. Okay, do we have any correspondence tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, all right. First on our agenda is Ms. Sarah Lee Thomas, who's going to present for the downtown association request. So she'll come on up. Thank you for being here.
City manager, mayor, councilman, I'm Sarah Lee Thomas, President Downtown Seaford Association. The purpose of our association is to help improve the downtown. We have had a flag project going for many years. The city has put up the flags, taken them down, and stored them. A couple of years ago, we've had a little glitch. Our flags got lost. They were eventually found, and now we, they were in very bad condition. So now we would like to get new banners with an assortment of designs. Chris, you want to show the designs? She'll put some of the designs up now so you can see. Many members of our association has worked very hard on this project. The banners will cost around $2,214. We have had a $1,000 donation. We would like for the city to help us out with $1,214. We do appreciate any help you would give us. Are there any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from the council?
If I might just make a statement.
Sure.
For council, so the Director of Economic Development, the Director of Electric, and I have met with the Downtown Seaford Association, represented by Sarah Lee, and we discussed at length this project. As stated, they, they would like to invest in banners with the city. As we spoke at the last meeting with Carson, Carson Hastings' Hometown Heroes Project, the proposal is to install the brackets for the banners on the sidewalk side. The Hometown Heroes banners would go up for a period of the year between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. These banners, if purchased and approved by the city council, would go up before those, and then after those, they would be displayed. That is acceptable to DSA, and it's acceptable to city staff, specifically the Electric Department, who's responsible for installing these. Additionally, as it's laid out in your package, we do have the $1,214 that's requested to close the funding gap.
Yes.
From the Economic Development Marketing Budget to purchase these.
Okay. Okay, if there are no questions, yes, sir.
So Charles, if I understood you correctly, the city would be responsible for putting up and removal and storage of these banners?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is what we have done historically.
Yes, and we do have one more that we don't have displayed up there that I'm really excited about. The city has one of the seal, your city's seal, and a shape of one of those banners. So we would, we also want to incorporate that with the group that we have up here. And under that seal, we would also have Seaford. So we don't know the cost of that yet, but we'll take care of that.
Nice.
That's awesome. Thank you, Sarah Lee. Councilman Henderson?
It could be for you, Sarah Lee, or maybe for Charles. What's the history behind the assistance of funding on any of the previous flags?
We have done it several different ways. We have used it, I belong to the Acorn Club, we have used it as a community project. We're Acorn Club, I believe, did all of them. We've used, other clubs have used it as a community project, and we've had, you know, like City do something, and maybe Rotary, whoever. Other clubs do something. And then there have been several times when the downtown association has done it 100% by ourselves. So this project is probably, really, we probably worked with it close 15 to 20 years and have replaced flags, and we've done it all kinds of ways. In fact, we even thought about this as a community project. But then the virus hit, and all the clubs seem to be trying to get their own money together without giving it to something else. So it could be done lots of different ways.
I'm, I'm in favor of it, as known a little bit about the history of it. There's been some discussions between the, the association and the city over the last few months about, about the whereabouts of the flags and to, I'm in favor of it basically because it would be an olive branch to the association because of the, the discrepancy, so to speak. However, just, just keep in mind that we had a young man here two weeks ago who, who put forth a proposal to provide 36 flags at no cost to the city. He's got his own fundraising going, and just, just keep that in mind. But, you know, I am in favor of it in order to extend an olive branch because of the differences the city's had, maybe with the custody of the flags and, and the like. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one comment, a good, I just want to appreciate your organization for the Christmas parade and Halloween parade, all that you guys do for our community and partner with the city and our local businesses. I just want to appreciate you and recognize you for that and say thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, and we do not ever have a fundraiser. I mean, I think you guys know that. What we have, what donations, what our association runs on is the money that is given for our Christmas parade to help promote that. And with that, we also pull out enough money to run our Halloween parade. But you never see that advertised in a place. We just try to watch every penny we get, but we like to have a nice Halloween parade and give the children treats and trophies also. So this is where this is coming from.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion, Councilman McCoy, to approve the request of Ms. Sarah Lee Thomas for the Downtown Seaford Association to provide $1,214 of funding assistance from the Economic Development Marketing Budget to purchase banners to be placed in the downtown along High Street as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman McCoy. Is there a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
All right, we have a second. Are there any questions to the motion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
And Councilman King?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Sarah Lee, for all that you do, and all of you for what you do for our town. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We will help the city any way we can. We try, you know, everything we say about the city is good. We're not going down another road. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have the demolition of the three buildings to light.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
You have before you this evening a request from the residents of River Place, actually, the resident, Mr. David Perlmutter is here representing them. As you remember, council agreed to do a relief for building three at residents of River Place in October of 2020 in the amount of six, $1,600, $1,69,699 in consideration of demo of three properties, 114 Market Street, 107 Spring Street, and I'll just run through them real quick just to kind of refresh your memory. These are the conditions of those properties. So Mr. Perlmutter, if you want to come on up, he is here this evening to ask for an extension of that demo. It was originally stated that they had to be demolished by April 30th, 2021. So if you want to say anything further?
Dave, hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
City manager. We're here tonight requesting a 60-day extension for the demolition of these three downtown buildings. Our initial plan was to coordinate with our construction on our new project, building three, which we hope to get started in the very near future. The residence is the third apartment building, and the reason we're asking for this extension is it's going to cost us even additional more money if we have to remobilize our contractors twice, you know, than when we're on-site building the apartments. So we're here tonight to ask you for a 60-day waiver. We believe that the timeframe will fit with our estimated time schedule now. Additionally, we don't have permits yet from Denrec or Soil Conservation District. We have everything in line with the city of Seaford on their end and the Fire Marshal, but we're still waiting on approvals from the state. So some of this is out of our hands, but to ask a contractor just to come out and mobilize for this, leave and come back and start our project, that's why we're asking for the 60-day window tonight.
Okay. All right, are there any questions or comments on the delay in the demolition for 60 days? Councilman Henderson?
My, I'm uncomfortable with it, Mr. Perlmutter. And the reason is, is that we, we made a bargain, and once this bargain was struck, the news went out to everybody in the city that that building that we're seeing right there on the panel, which is the biggest topic of discussion around town, is not going, it's going to be delayed for another 60 days. There was, there was a lot of excitement, a lot of, a lot of people were very positive and went along with, with it, knowing that that building was going to be down at the end of April. But now, the five of us have to vote on whether we're going to go back on that deal that we made with the people of the city. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with it. It's, it's a bitter pill to swallow. I would go along with it if, if I knew unconditionally that there would be no more extensions.
Unconditionally, there will be no more extensions.
Well, that's good enough for me. If that, if June, if June 30th is the drop dead date, then I would go along with it. But, I mean, it, there's many, many, many people, excuse me, sir, many, many people are contacted by each of us about when is that building coming down. So, I mean, and we told them, and everybody we talked to, we told them it's going down by April 30th. So now, now we got to contact people and say now it's going to be June 30th. So as long as we can, you know, hold you to that, then, because we, we struck a pretty good bargain for, for the permit fees, so, or the impact, is it impact or permit?
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
It was a combination of both.
Combination, okay. So, all right, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do, I have one.
Councilman King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess, and this may be more aligned, maybe to the city manager, Charles Anderson, so I could get clarity. So let's say we approve, hypothetically, we approve the extension to June 30th. Devil's advocate, June 30th comes, nothing happens. What recourse would we in the city of Seaford have if we, if we, if we prolong this and June 30th come and nothing happens?
I'll try to answer it this way. The city has some resources available to it. Obviously, the buildings are condemned, so the city could move forward with the demolition order. The council would have to fund whatever that cost would be, and we could then, if the bill goes unpaid, we could lean the property. That's one avenue. We could certainly, if it's a condition of the existing, I'm sorry, building number three, we could work with the developer, you know, we could stop making inspections. There are other things that we could do there. Our hope is that we work together with the developer on this and move this project forward without having to resort to either one of those options.
And I appreciate, and I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but if we do grant this extension, and at the end of this extension, if it doesn't come to fruition, then I just want to be clear that there is possible next steps.
Yep.
Additionally, based on council's original approval on the $169,000, if, if the demolition didn't occur as of April 30th, the developer would then be responsible for paying those fees on the building. So if it didn't come down by June 30th, that will go back into play too. He would then be responsible for the fees on building three.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from council? Again, I realize none of us wanted to hear this. We wanted this to happen, but it also makes sense, on a business standpoint, not to mobilize construction twice. It is 60 days. We're going to count on Mr. Perlmutter to get it done, so we're going to count on it. So.
It will get done.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll accept the motion.
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to pre-request for an owner of the residents of River Place, the shops of Riverwalk and the Galeril at Riverwalk LLC to delay their April 30th, 2021, agreed upon date to dem, to demolish three buildings in the downtown area by 60 days until June 30th, 2021, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Holland. Is there a second?
Councilman King, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
And Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. So you have your 60 days, and we'll wait for the announcement. We'll all come down and celebrate when those buildings come down. Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee.
Good evening again. The Economic Development Committee met on March 5th with to review a request from Mr. David Perlmutter in regard to Sunset County Tax Map 431 5.00 318 and 431 5.00 323.00, known as the residents of River Place. The property currently has an existing sewer line, city sewer line, that runs diagonally through the property. Let me go to the next slide so you can, can see that. And as part of the construction of this building, that needs to be relocated. So in the plans, and, and just to kind of orient you, the yellow block area is the area that, that we're referencing. In, in plans review, the plans were sent to our city engineer for review, and initially the plan was to have it sort of on the perimeter of the property, sort of like this, if you follow the green line. They had an initial estimate of $120,000 to do this work. It was a, it was an estimate. It was not necessarily an actual quote that they obtained from a contractor. And then after review from our city engineer, which is normal standard process, it was recommended that that actual sewer get put out into the road. Additionally, that the size of the pipe be increased from 16 inches to 18 inches in order for them to achieve that self-cleaning velocity needed for that sewer, based on the, the slope that they were planning to put that at. So Mr. Perlmutter requested, sent a request through the Economic Development Committee for some assistance for, for getting this sewer relocation taken care of. He has received two quotes, one from Teal Construction in the amount of $360,040, and then one from Corrado Construction in the amount of $784,100. Now, they're vastly different in that Teal's quote does include the cost of the street paving, the patching, and all of those sort of things. Teal's did not. So to bring those numbers somewhat back into similarity for you, to compare just the sewer costs, Corrado was 595... to compare just the sewer costs, Corrado was $595,800 and Teal was the $360,040. So, the committee, the Economic Development Committee, had quite an extensive discussion around this. One, trying to really find out what is the, the beneficial use? What is the city getting out of, out of this? And a tangible number was very difficult to, to achieve in that, yes, it's getting, we are getting an increase in pipe size, but the pipe size doesn't, that doesn't really change anything for us. The increase in size is actually for their project. But what we are getting is sewer that was put into place in the 1950s. So, we're getting new pipe, which will give us a much longer extension of time that this would benefit our community. So, based on those discussions, and additionally, the roadway, South North Street, at some point in time, the city would have to have that responsibility of paving that road. So, after quite a bit of discussion, it was agreed upon that, yes, the city could probably take on the assumption of doing that, the road paving. That, that would be something we would be doing anyway. And then an additional, additional assistance with those fees. So, the committee made a recommendation to City Council to assist the project by assuming the responsibility of the cost of paving of South North Street and a fee reduction on future projects owned by the developer, Mr. David Pearl Mutter, in the amount not to exceed $175,000, which is inclusive of the road paving. Just to kind of give you an idea, it's roughly about $60,000, $61,000 to do that, with a stipulated condition that these fee waivers would expire three years from approval. So, if council approves it tonight, that starts a ticking clock that these fees do go away. As you know, Mr. Pearl Mutter is here, as well as Mr. Keith Fisher, who is the architect on the project, and we're happy to answer any questions.
And before we ask questions, City Manager, can you explain the importance of this pipe? Who all uses this pipe and what areas it takes care of?
This is a portion, the upper reaches of what we term in the city as our interceptor sewer. So, this is a main sewer that picks up all of the flows from Nanticoke Memorial Hospital, a lot of the development along the Route 13 corridor. So, just an estimate, we provided the committee when we met, about a half a million gallons of sewer runs through this directly to the wastewater treatment plant. So, we watch anything that goes on around this very closely.
So, it's a critical, critical piece to our wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So, I just wanted to point that out for those of us that aren't wastewater treatment plant experts here and know where all the pipes run. So, all right, questions, Councilman King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Trish, if you could give a guesstimation on total dollar amounts that the city has given, Mr. Pearl Mutter, in waivers and tax reductions and impact fees? Is there, can you, can we get an idea of what the city has done up to this point as far as total dollars?
I would have to go back as far as the tax, tax abatements. I don't know that I have that figure.
We can certainly get that for you. We do track it. We know where it's at, but yet to have, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I would hate to wag a number. I mean, but I, I mean, you can just know that obviously, based on Building Three, that was $169,000. There was some relief that was given on Buildings One and Two as well. But I can, I can certainly get you those numbers.
Yeah, I was just curious. I was curious to see how much the city has given up to this point.
Councilman McCoy?
This is a question for City Manager Anderson. Just to verify for council and public, in all likelihood, we would have to get that pipe replaced at some juncture anyway, correct?
Yeah, that's a good point, Councilman. Yes, sir. The, as the Director of Economic Development stated, this pipeline was put in in the mid 50s, '54, I think the plans are dated. The typical useful life of a sewer line like this is 75 years or maybe a little bit more. So, we certainly are approaching that. All things staying static with the property, the city would ultimately eventually have to upgrade it all our own and, and renew that line. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee for a potential fee reduction request from David Pearl Mutter. Sussex County Tax Map 431-5.00-318, comma, 431-5.00-323.00, known as res, as residents at River Place LLC, and the amount of $175,000, inclusive of the co, of the cost of paving, with the stipulated condition, this fee waiver would expire within three years from the date of this approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Santos. Do we have a second?
Councilman McCoy, I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And Councilman King?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tricia. Thank you, guys. All right, next, we're going to call up Tracy Torbert on the proposed dates for extended office hours for absentee voting this election.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As everyone's aware, the municipal election is upcoming on April the 17th from the hours of seven to three here at City Hall. Last year, we did extended office hours to allow people the opportunity to come up and register, or register and vote by absentee prior to the election with COVID and everything else during contactless voting. So, we would like to propose to do that again this year. We're proposing to do it Saturday, April 10th, from 10 o'clock till 1 o'clock, and Wednesday, April 14th, from 5 until 7. And as in the years past, we will work with all eligible voters to use other outlets if they're not able to make it during those hours or our normal business hours.
Tracy, how will we advertise that?
I actually spoke with Sierra today. We're putting a timeframe together on how we can get this information out, as well as the electronic register vote. And we will also extend it out to our candidates so that they can let people know when they're having conversations.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the extended office hours? Yes, Councilman McCoy?
Just a procedural question. During these times, who has to be present? Does anybody from the Board of Elections have to be present or anything like that?
As far as when we vote by absentee, yes. We, what we did last year was we had myself here and we had one member of the Board of Elections present because they actually oversee the absentee process.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the dates for extended office hours for absentee voting for the 2021 municipal election as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Santos, second. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Tracy, so much for all the work you do on our elections. We appreciate it. All right, next, we have the replacement of Scott Pickenpaul in the municipal election. Scott is running for City Council, so we need to replace him. And we're putting forth the name Buddy Lamb. So, if there are no questions or comments on adding him to our municipal election board?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Councilman King, can you, can you explain a little bit on the criteria on who's picked and chosen to sit on these boards? Is there a process? If there is, what that looks like?
It's really just a process of people who are willing to serve the community in, in different formats, like all of our other committees. People put their name forth and say, "I'd like to be involved and help serve." And so, this was a name that actually came through Tracy. And so, she helped, helped select. And people willing to serve, we're happy to try to place them on a committee.
Awesome. And if, if people in the community have that desire, how, how do they go about that? Who would, who would they contact?
They can talk to any of the elected. If you have people that want to be in on a committee, just have them put their name and then let me know. And when we have openings, we certainly fill them.
Good. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
And I will just add for the election committee or Board of Elections and election officers, they do actually have to be city residents. Not all of ours are like that, but there are some that do have that stipulation, so.
Sure, yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilman McCoy?
Yeah, just to speak about Buddy for a second. I know he has experience in leadership in the city. I believe he is the president of his homeowners, homeowners association. So, he's worked in the community and benefited people in the past.
Right. So, you know, as mayor, you inherit other people that are on committees. And then as people roll off, then it's the mayor's job to appoint people. So, that's how it does. But we're always interested in names. We try to keep a list of people on a waiting list in case someone rolls off. And, and again, every election, just is a good time to talk about this. Every election, we give every member of a committee an opportunity to roll off so they don't feel uncomfortable saying, "I don't want to serve," and, and then get an opportunity for others to join. So, just know that that, during that election cycle is when we change those or add people, so. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Marion Buddy Lamb as an election officer to replace Scott Pickenpaul for the municipal election to be held on April 17th, 2021, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman McCoy. Is there a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Can we have a second? Any questions on the motion? If not, do a roll call vote. Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
And Councilman King?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have the reading of Chapter Eight on Morals and Conduct.
Nope, we got Mayor, uh...
Did I miss one?
Police Chief's Advisory Board.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
All right, I'm putting before you the, the Police Chief's Advisory Board. This is a combination of people that I've appointed, recommendations from the chief, and again, people willing to serve that have the time to come to these meetings. So, before you is that list. If there are no questions or comments on the list of names, I'll accept the motion. Yes, sir, Councilman McCoy?
Again, just a procedural question. Can you guys explain to the public what the Police Chief's Advisory Board does?
I'm going to let Councilman Henderson or the chief share exactly his intent of this, of this board.
Well, I'll, I'll defer to the chief since he's, if he would like to, to chime in. I've been appointed as chairman of the committee basically to, to help get it off the ground and establish procedural rules so that it can, it can be a self-generated committee. However, the, the chief's advisory board, if, if the council approves it, will start doing some elective or some, some governing rules. And the purpose of it would, would be to do what it says, to advise the chief of... And I'm sorry, chief, but I had it, your mission statement for the board. But if you would, if you would like, I know you have it on the tip of your tongue. But, but basically, it's about, you know, bringing, bringing, bringing to the fore life safety issues, cultural issues, and other matters of community concern to the chief's attention so that he can interweave that with his mission. So, if, if I've strayed too far off, forgive me, but I'll, I'll let you explain the mission statement.
I'll try to be as brief as I can.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So, in order to truly achieve community engagement, community policing, you have to engage with the community. Community members and community stakeholders should all have a seat at the table to help identify problems, even if they're perceived problems, and provide some alternative solutions and suggestions of how to fix those problems. Because police typically focus on life safety issues and intelligence-led policing and things of that nature. And sometimes, we may not see some of the other areas that might impact folks that live in all throughout the city. And so, it's very important to have a diverse group of folks representing all demographics from the community and to identify, in my opinion, those quality of life issues that truly make a difference. And that's the primary objective of it. We also partnered with Dell State University. Their survey results have came back. And I think it's the perfect time for us to get started to identify those problems that were kind of highlighted through that survey and to, let's collectively get together and make those decisions to make things better for Seaford.
So, just like all of you have committees typically assigned to your liaison, the, the police have not had that. So, this is an opportunity, although the chief is always very good about responding individually to the public when they have questions, this would give him and Councilman Henderson the opportunity to have a direct group that responds to them on a more regular basis to get feedback on maybe some ideas they're thinking about. But this group is different than others as it, it's not all city residents. It is people that live outside the city that they're going to be a part of this group, so.
Thanks, thanks for clarity.
Thank you, chief.
If there are no other, Councilman Santos?
Yeah, I was just wondering, out of the members that are going to be in the advisory board, do any of them speak Haitian Creole or Spanish?
The chief has asked and we're, we're recruiting, trying to find someone that covers all groups in our city. Yes, so, the chief has done an exceptional job making sure our police department represents our community, and he'll make sure this board does the same.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Good question. Thank you. If not, I'll accept the motion.
Councilman McCoy, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept the appointments to the Police Chief's Advisory Board as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman McCoy. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Santos. Are there any questions on the motion? Do a roll call vote. Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
And Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, chief. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Henderson, for serving as the lead on that. Okay. Next, we have the change in Charter Eight.
Okay, so, in council's package, we have an ordinance, a draft ordinance, to amend Chapter Eight, Morals and Conduct of the Municipal Code of the Sea, City of Seaford relating to sexual offenders. And so, it's, it's pretty straightforward. The or, draft ordinance, proposed ordinance, gives intent and purpose of this. It goes through definitions. And I just want to point out, I want to highlight a couple issues to this code. And it, it defines a sexual offender, and I'll read it into the record. Any person who is registered as a risk assessment Tier Three or risk assessment Tier Two sex offender pursuant to Title 11, Chapter 41, Subchapter Three of the Code of Delaware. And it provides restrictions established. And it states it shall be unlawful for any sexual offender to reside, lodge, abide, or live within 2,500 feet of any school, park, or childcare facility located within the City of Seaford. And it, it talks about how that distance will be measured, the violations and penalties associated with this ordinance. And then just note for council's edification, the exemption, exceptions. It states this article shall not apply to any sexual offender who has established a residence prior to the date of adoption of this article and shall not apply if the school, park, or childcare facility was established subsequent to the establishment of this sex offenders, of the sex offender's residence. It also has a severability call clause. So, it's, it's pretty, pretty short. And then attached there is a map in council's package up on the screen there that our building official provided for us. What he attempted to do there was lay out all of the city parks, daycares, schools. And then the, I'll call it the bubbles around the outside, gives that 2,500 feet distance. And I'd just like to say, the chief is here. This was a great issue that we worked on. The mayor received concern from a citizen. We did look into it with the chief and his staff and his Criminal Investigation Division. And they were actually one that, that brought us this ordinance and said a sister community had it, and we might want to look at adopting it. So, we ran it by our city solicitor, and he advised us that these types of ordinances are permissible, permissible and appropriate. So, we drafted this, and this is the first reading of the ordinance. As council is aware, our ordinance adoption process is two steps. So, it would be the first reading this evening for any input or questions the council might have. We would bring it back to a subsequent meeting for a second reading. So, it would be the next reading, sorry, next council meeting at the end of the month, on the 23rd. And then if council decides to adopt it at that meeting, then we would advertise the ordinance subsequent to that meeting, and it would be effective 30 days after advertisement. And then we would start to enforce that. The code department would work with the police department when sex offenders try to locate in the city so that we would ensure they come into compliance with this.
Okay, are there any questions on this change? Councilman King?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've received quite a bit of correspondence from concerned constituents throughout our community. So, if it's okay, I've got quite a few questions. If it doesn't pertain to it and I need to go in a different direction, Um, if it doesn't pertain to it, and I need to go in a different direction, um, I'm hoping the city manager can elude me saying, "Hey, you know, that's, that's not what we're here to talk about tonight," and then I can, I can go on a different path. Um, from my understanding, the city of Seaford currently has two, and I, and I believe they use the, the terminology halfway house, uh, for sexual offenders in our community. We have one on Pine Street, and we have one on Magnolia, I believe. So we have two, we have two residents, or two, yeah, residents currently in our community that, that are designed to house convicted sex offenders. My question is, if this does get passed, are those two locations grandfathered in, would they still be allowed to continue in the, in the city limits? That's, that's my first question, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir. I think I can try to answer that, Councilman. So as stated in this, uh, ordinance, it, there are, there are, there's the exception clause, Section 8.8.5, and it shall not apply to anyone who has established residence prior to the date of adoption of the article. So, in essence, they would be grandfathered, yes, sir. Um, if the, uh, situation were to arise where they were to move out, then they would have to come into compliance with that ordinance. Or, conversely, if the house that you reference, and I'm not aware of it, but the, the halfway house, as you describe it, uh, were to cease existence, shut down, or anything, or try to move, they would have to come into compliance as well at, at that change. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
All right, and if it's okay, I can move on.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. The second question is, is around residential homes. Um, if I understood correctly, the city of Seaford currently has an ordinance that only allows three unrelated people to live in one residence. So the question pertains to the halfway houses, where you've got as many as eight or ten, ten people unrelated living in that home. So why is the halfway house allowed to exceed the expectation for landlords or anyone else in our community?
Okay, I'm gonna try to explain it this way, and that, that's, um, it's a little bit of a complicated discussion, but you are absolutely correct. Our zoning ordinance defines a family as no more than three unrelated people, okay? And we've been enforcing that for years, and we still enforce that for certain rental homes. A three-quarter house, as defined, uh, has protections given by the federal government under the ADA and other, um, protections that they've been afforded as a recovery home. And what that federal legislation says is, our zoning caveats cannot apply to those homes, and they are allowed to have up to ten in a congregate setting, and it has to be treated as a single-family home. We have no control over that by federal law.
Okay. Um, and so just to kinda piggyback on that scenario?
Yes, sir.
Are they, are those homes, halfway homes, considered rentals? Is there any type of inspection that's done at that property, and, and is there any fee or licensing, um, applied to that type of situation?
Okay. My understanding and interpretation of the rules are, there is not. Again, any rules that we have at the local level, or even the county level, are not applicable if they meet that narrow definition of what, what's termed an Oxford house or a three-quarter home. So our, um, rental inspection license do not apply. Um, and as far as I know, and I'm not an expert by any means, um, the state doesn't even license these homes.
Councilman Henderson, you would add a little bit to that?
If I could add to that, the, the, the Oxford model of a three-quarter home, it, it depends on whether the institution owns that property or that institution rents that property from someone else. If the institution rents the property, then they are subject to rental license fees. However, most Oxford-style organizations, uh, in this area own the property. And then the others, the, the family unit contributes to the household through, uh, air quotes, rent, but it's in a family setting. So, and, and it's usually organized with a, with a captain, and they, they're self-governing, and if the people break the rules, then they, they have to move out. They, they get, they, they don't move out, they get, they get sent out by the family. So, um, there, there is a, there, there is a distinction, you know, if, uh, if an Oxford-type group actually rented from a landlord, then yes, they would be subject to rental licensing, but most don't because they, if they own the property, they're not subject to it. So there are those two, those two distinctions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
One more.
Yes, Councilman McCoy?
Charles, just on back to the, uh, exceptions, to clarify, if, if a, I guess, does the exception follow the individual or the property? In, in the essence, if, if a sexual offender's currently residing in the residence, then they move, but they stay in the city, are they still subject? Or because they're new resident, new area, that they're subject to the new?
Yeah, my interpretation of this would be, and I'll use, you know, kind of any street, if they, if the sexual offender, tier one, tier two, or tier three, sorry, lives on High Street, and they desire to move to Philip Street, that, they would have to come into compliance, and that would not be...
Right.
That's what I'm gonna say.
Reset that. So...
They can stay where they are.
Right.
But once they make a change, they have to become compliant.
Councilman Henderson?
Councilman King, did you have any other questions? I just have one follow-up at, at the end. I can wait till the end.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have one, um, one question. Charles, um, could, could you, for the people, for, for me and the people who are here and online, are there any enclaves within the circles or arcs inside the city? Are there any, are there any un, I'll call it unprotected areas within the city? Not, not, not including parts that are outs, that are actually inside city limits, but outside, but any enclaves within that envelope?
Let me just verify we're, we're speaking the same thing. To me, an enclave is an area that the city surrounds, a kind of a donut hole that is not annexed. Yes, sir, there are. An example of that would be behind Dunkin' Donuts, as an example. That, that, that area of, uh, Front Street extended is not annexed.
Right. Okay, so there's, there's on, there's enclaves that are not annexed, but are there enclaves that are annexed that are not protected by this, these arcs?
Are there enclaves that are...
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying, are there holidays or openings in the, in the protected area inside the city that are already annexed?
Maybe the best thing to do would be to contact the county. I can reach out to them and find out what their rules are.
You, you bring up a good point. If I'm interpreting your, your comment correctly, as an example, if there is a, an enclave within the city that is not annexed, this ordinance would not apply to them.
Well, I understand that, I get that.
Yes, sir.
But from this cloud that's drawn on the zoning map, or on the map, it's not clear to me that whether there's any spaces inside the city that are not covered.
Oh, I'm with you. I do not believe so, the way the building official laid this out. That cloud is contiguous, and it would cover everything. You, Councilman, you do bring up a good point, though. If it is an enclave, and it's not, and it's a property that's not annexed in the city, this ordinance after adoption would not apply, and it would need to be a county ordinance. That's, that's a great point. But yes, um, the only thing, if you study this map, there is a small, small piece of the governor's grant development that is not captured. I believe it's one lot at the very, it would be the northeast corner of that development. Again, one lot, I believe. But there is that with the 2,500 feet.
I will follow up with the county and find out what their, their rules on this and share with them what we're doing to see if we're aligned. That's a, that's a good point. Councilman King, did you have something else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess the last question that I would have would be guidance, right? So as a, as a sitting council member, having conversations out in the community, constituents, residents, neighbors, friends come up and say, as we talked about, a halfway home pops up right next to them, right? Completely different expectations are set. You can have ten people, they don't have to be related, completely different than the, the guidelines that we have for residential homeowners. If they have a concern, would they have a conversation with Danny Short? Would they have a conversation? So in order to get that, an ordinance or a law or something to supersede the, the, the city, if that makes sense, who would they voice or have that conversation with? What, what elected official do they need to have that conversation with? If that makes sense?
Yes, sir. No, it absolutely does. We, we have received this question here at City Hall. And I'm, Councilman, I'm not exactly sure how to answer your question. I'll try to answer it like this. We have, we have done some research, and there are some states, specifically the state of New Jersey, that has some state requirements for three-quarter homes, okay? It requires a license. It requires medical professionals on staff or on consultation. And there are a list of other bullet points. It was actually given to us by our Criminal Investigations Division. So there are state, in other states, there are state, um, requirements that are placed on. So that, that would have to be, you know, your local legislators would have to be consulted with that. But I go back to my understanding of all of this, is it really is federal legislation. So, you know, that would be talking to your federal delegation, so on and so forth. Um, so... And I will say, I mean, we, we do have a few of them. We don't go in very often. But by and large, the ones that we've been into are, are relatively well-run. If we do have a problem, the ownership, when we reach out to them, nine times out of ten, is very receptive to our concerns and, and our, um, discussions that we have with them.
No, and I agree with you.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, my, the, the thing I wanted clarity on is somebody has that conversation, saying, "Hey, what are next steps? Who can I have a conversation with?"
Yeah, I would think state and federal.
I'm sending them in the right direction. But to you, I, wholeheartedly, every one that I've been into, every, I know lots of people that run those facilities, and they, they add a fantastic value to our community. And, but my question, I just wanna make sure I send them in the right direction to, so they can get the answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Could I add one last thing?
The, just as advice, since, um, I've had some extensive dealings with this, that there is a legal distinction between a halfway home and a three-quarter home. There, they are two separate entities and two separate animals. So when, um, when, when you talk to your constituents, as, as I do often, you know, just make sure that they understand the differences between...
Can you, can you share that?
Between the two. Well, a halfway home may be, um, may be under direct medical care or, or direct Department of Corrections, uh, supervision, because they're probation and parole type things. Uh, a three-quarter home is, uh, generally an, an association, um, of recovering people, of people with, uh, lifestyle or, um, life-altering conditions, or addictions, or other, other problems such as that, that group together in, in order to, to work. A halfway home, uh, and these people, these people in three-quarter homes are generally, um, gainfully employed, contributing to the household. The, the halfway home is supervised, professionally supervised, and, uh, it's designed as a transition from an institution, rather than, you know, a three-quarter home, someone may have come from a detox or a 28-day, um, facility or rehab and is transitioning back out, but not from, not from a state institution.
Right.
So that's, that's the best way I can explain it in, uh, in the brief amount of time we have.
Yep.
But there, there are two difference, two differences.
Yep. And I guess just to be clear, to, to maybe wrap that up and put a bow on it, thank you, Councilman. If this ordinance were adopted, any tier-two or any tier-three sexual offender who lived in a three-quarter house, a halfway house, that exists currently, they're grandfathered until they move out, and then they are not to, they cannot move back in under that status. Is that...
Can they, can they allow new residents to move in?
They can allow new residents to move in, as long as they are not tier-two or tier-three sex offenders. Yeah, that doesn't stop if they have, if they have an addiction issue and they're not a sex offender. They, that, uh, three-quarter house or halfway house can continue.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So if I understand you, let's just hypothetically say they have ten, ten current residents of sex offenders of those tiers.
Sure.
Those ten move out, say, in the next year.
Okay.
Does that house close down? Are they allowed to bring ten more people in?
They can bring ten more people in that comply with this ordinance. Is that...
Makes sense, yeah, thank you.
So a complicated issue. This is a first reading. This will come back through at our next meeting. I appreciate all that. I appreciate our, our city resident for being here tonight and bringing it to our attention. Appreciate the city's hard work on this, and the police department for researching some better ways that we can handle this. I don't think this is gonna go away, and I think this is a first step of probably many other changes. So I appreciate your guys' support of this, and we'll bring it here next month. All right, next, we have the bids for the fire department's roof.
Okay, our Director of Public Works could not be here this evening, so on his behalf, I'm gonna present the information. Council will recall, this is the second time we have bid the Seaford Fire Department Roof Drainage Renovations Bid. The first time, we got no bidders. This time, we got one bidder, Quality Exteriors, in the amount of $79,192.10. That amount was in excess of our budget. We budgeted $49,500. So because we wanna get this project done, the Director of Public Works, our project manager, reached back to this bidder. This bidder actually put the original roof, the, the existing roof, I should say, on the fire department. And just for kind of reminder purposes for council, we undertook this project. The roof is not leaking currently, but this, the roof drains on the King Street side of the main building, the two-story portion, are tied into our sewer system. So this is an I and I, an inflow and infiltration issue that we need to get this stormwater out from going to our wastewater treatment plant. So the Director of Public Works reached back to Quality Exteriors and said, "Look, you know, we don't have this in our budget." And what, the, the project is kinda two parts. We're renovating the roof, putting new downspouts down to the planters that are along the King Street side of the building. That's one piece of the project, and that's basically roofing work. The second piece of the project was redoing the sidewalks to put in troughs, trench drains, I'll call them, out through the curb. That's concrete work. So what we're recommending today is to do the roofing portion, the roof renovations, as well as the downspout, downspouts to drain into the, uh, planter area. There will be stones there to, uh, dissipate the energy of the rainwater discharge. And then should this become an issue, and we need to finish the concrete work, we would look at doing that in the next budget year. So, um, I, I can try to answer any questions that any councilperson may have.
Okay, any questions on the roof and drainage renovation? If not, I'll accept the motion.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion, Councilman King making the motion to award the Seaford Volunteer Fire Department Roof and Drainage Renovation Bid to Quality Exteriors in the amount of $44,187, as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the motion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
And Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have the bid for the lighting improvements. We're gonna invite the President of Electric, Bill Bennett.
Hello, uh, we put out for bid to replace the lights on High Street. Um, it started out as a High Street project and grew into High Street, the parking lot here at City Hall, Gateway Park, and, and River Wall. Um, they're all basically the same lights, a little bit of difference in them. Um, so we put out bids, received, uh, so that's a total of, of 65 light fixtures. And this is just replacing the type, the whole top piece, the whole lamp, um, to LED. Received four bids on this. Runze Electric Company for $95,551. American Energy Services LLC for $117,095. Annexter for $106,51.15. And Wesco Distribution for $101,719.14. Three to four vendors that I normally use, um, including the low, the low bid Runze Electric. I would recommend awarding the bid to the low bidder, Runze Electric Company, in the amount of $95,551. We have a commitment from Representative Short in the amount of $50,000 toward this project, and Senator Richardson in the amount of $32,000 for this project. The remaining $13,551 would be taken from the Green Energy Fund. This will make all these lights LED, saving the city in electric usage in time for going out and changing bulbs and using no money out of the operating budget.
Are there any questions for the Director of Electric in reference to his recommendation on this bid? Councilman Henderson?
If approved, when would this job go through?
Um, once the, the, uh...
Um, once the, the, uh, PA would be cut, it's about an eight to 10-week delivery on the lights. Um, so once they come in, um, we would start, start changing them out. But in today's world, eight to 10 weeks could be.
Right.
18 to 26 weeks. But once they come in, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll start on it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion to award the lighting improvements bid to Rumsey Electric Company in the amount of $95, excuse me, $95,551 as presented.
You negotiated well there, Bill. All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Councilman King, I'll, I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
Councilman King.
Aye.
Councilman Santos.
Aye.
Councilman Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Holland.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, Bill, thank you for your work on this, appreciate it. All right, next we have the bids on the Police Department paving.
Okay, so as council is aware, one of the final items for the Police Department renovation that we undertook this budget year is repaving and restriping of the parking lot, which it desperately needs. Uh, that was a portion of the project that staff was going to do, and our Director of Public Works put that bid out, and he received five bids. Uh, the low bidder was David A. Bramble in the amount of $68,170.65. I'd like to draw council's attention to, uh, a letter in their package from David A. Bramble citing that, uh, once he was questioned, Burley noted some bid anomalies when he did his analysis of the bid. And in speaking with them, they did not bid the specified thermoplastic striping. So, uh, in discussions, they have submitted a letter to withdraw their bid. Um, so the recommendation from the Director of Public Works is to go to the second bidder, should council accept the, the, uh, letter from David A. Bramble, which would be ECM Corporation, and it's, it's roughly about a thousand dollars difference, it's $69,782.45. Um, I would like to say that, uh, this project was also funded by CTF Funds from Representative Short, and it did come in well under budget, um, so that is not the issue. We have used ECM Corporation recently, they paved, uh, Market Street and King Street for us this last budget year, so we have worked with them, and the, uh, Director of Public Works is recommending award to ECM Corporation.
All right, are there any questions on the paving at the Police Department bid? If not, I'll accept a motion.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman King, I will make the motion to award the Police Department paving bid to ECM Corporation in the amount of $69,782.45 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilman Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Santos.
Aye.
Councilman King.
Aye.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
Councilman Holland.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, good job, chief. All right, thank you so much, do we have any old business?
We do not, sir.
Okay, reminders of meetings.
Okay, we have after-hours voting registration to be held on Saturday, March 20th, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Wednesday, March 24th, 21, until 7:00 p.m. So, uh, take advantage of those two days. Our Parks and Recreation, Recreation Department is hosting their annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 27th. Just, let's note, this is a different location than everybody's used to, it'll be at the Seaford Sports Complex. This year, not at the Ross Mansion, so it'll be at the football field. Ages toddler to four years old will begin at 9:00 a.m., and ages five to nine years old will begin at 10:00 a.m. Social distancing and mask-wearing are required to participate in the event. Additionally, as council's aware, there will be a municipal election on April 17th, 2021, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Just, uh, like to note, uh, there are four persons filed as of March 1st. Mr. Jeff Benson has filed for council, Councilman Orlando Holland has filed for reelection, Councilman James King has filed for reelection, and Mr. Scott Peckinpah has filed for city council. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll start off with, uh, committee reports, we'll change it up, we'll go with Councilman Henderson first tonight, if he's ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report is submitted in its entirety, um, however, I will just be going through the major parts of it. Um, Chief John Wilson from the Seaford Volunteer Fire Department, uh, has given his report. He's, uh, got 1,000 alarms to date as of, uh, yesterday. I'm sorry, um, that number's missing for some reason, but the fire calls to date are 121 to date. Um, 74 calls for February of '21, averaging 2.6 calls per day for February. Uh, 12 calls so far for March, and at an average of 1.5 calls per day, uh, so far for March, and an average of 1.8 calls per day for the, for the year. Uh, EMS is 696 calls to date, um, as of two, um, there's 278 calls for February of 2021, 9.9 calls. Uh, I've got a couple typos here, excuse me. Uh, 9.9, uh, would be the average for February. 58 calls for, for March 2021 so far, and 7.2 calls, uh, on average for March of 2021. And for an, uh, average call per day for 2021, a 10.3 calls. A total of 817 calls for the year and an average of 12.1 calls per day. Uh, uh, there's one significant call reported that was a fire in, on February 24th. The longer mat fire contained two, uh, some dryer units. Under apparatus, Engine 87-2 is out of service for annual DOT check. Uh, Engine 87-5 is, uh, annual D, DOT check was completed on 3/4. Uh, all the other apparatus DOT checks are scheduled in the upcoming weeks. And the, uh, new tires were replaced on Tower 87 due to age and FBA compliance. And I know you gave us a cost, chief, but what was that cost?
$6,500.
$6,500 for six tires, so, uh, that's, uh, that's a lot of rubber.
A lot of rubber.
So, um, under EMS, um, the EMS service is changing its billing company to DMMS of Wilmington, Delaware, to help with better increase of ambulance bill, billing. You, you may recall several months ago that, uh, former President Reed was discussing this in his reports, um, of trying to get, uh, trying to capture, um, uh, you know, just trying to capture more, more billing and to try to raise the revenue of, of the EMS service. And this is, uh, done with the hopes of increasing, uh, uh, I forget the term, but there, there's a, uh, you know, I don't have, I don't have the term in my tongue, but there, there's, uh, lax billing or, or vacancies in, in the billing process.
Write-offs?
Well, I'm sure they do write-off, but there, there was a special term that President Reed had said, um, but it escapes me at this, or former President Reed, but it escapes me at this time, but, um, when they initially, they were trying to re, trying to capture, I think, was the, was the word, uh, the, some of the, some of the billing, some of the, some of the lax billing. Um, new ambulance B-87 update, the chassis has arrived, um, uh, to the factory on March 4th, and they're hoping for delivery on July 1st. Um, so, uh, the Sussex County Council has recently had a, had a, uh, or is tomorrow? Today, okay, Tuesday, um, 3/9, uh, on a tax transfer money that has allocated $250,000 for the purchase of a new ambulance. Do I understand that passed today, chief? Okay. So there's a, a one-time allocation to the department for $250,000, and that's going to go towards the purchase of, uh, a new ambulance. EMS standby on March 6th at Seaford High School with DEMA for the COVID vaccination site. Uh, EMS standby on March 19th and 20th coming up at Middle Ford Speedway. And, um, the, the department will be bringing up a vote on the capital expenditure for new ballistic vests for EMS crews and fire police at the next department meeting. And you'll see here about training and then, uh, in other, in other news, the state of Delaware, DivCom is starting the new process to replace all 800 megahertz radios that do not comply with the current requirements for Phase 2. Uh, Seaford Volunteer Fire Department currently has 10 radios for the initial batch of money for the fire service, and DivCom will, uh, be into inventory to see what else needs to be replaced within the next few weeks. And during our weekly meeting, I think the chief said that there are six or seven different radio systems on each truck.
Radio systems or?
Is it?
Radios.
Radios, radios, just not system, but just, yes, okay, so there's six, six or seven, up, up to seven different radios on each truck, so you can see how that adds up with all the pieces of equipment. Okay. Moving on to Seaford Police Department, you can see, um, the Chief Kraft has, um, given us some, uh, comprehensive data with crimes to date and crime totals dating back to 2018. Uh, you can see trends through these total numbers of crimes. Uh, however, please, when you try to analyze the, the data, um, the collection of the data is changing and the categorization of it is changing, so, uh, some of those numbers, uh, don't translate, uh, one, one-for-one. So the total, the total number of crimes, um, uh, they're, they're being measured in a little bit different way. So you'll see, uh, most of them are trending even or down, but, uh, there are some that are a little bit lopsided. Uh, you can see the criminal complaints, there were 212 complaints over the period, and the distribution of those complaints. Uh, in the crime view chart, if you were to blow it up, you, you could see it a little bit better, but it gives you the, the days and times and the frequencies, uh, times of the days that the violations were occurring. Moving down, you'll see the drug, the number of drug complaints and their subdivisions. The number of traffic complaints, there were 245 traffic contacts resulting in 97 citations and 24 warnings. We had one DUI that was, and it was accident-related. 14 crashes, two, two were unfortunately injury accidents. Moving down through, you'll see, um, a, a number of significant events through the period. And in, uh, administration, you'll see what the administration of, of the department has been up to. Uh, very busy. I will say that there's been a, a benchmark, benchmark analytics kickoff meeting, which, um, is one of the, one of the directives that the chief has been working on. And, uh, under events, you'll see some of the things that, uh, the department continues to do with its volunteerism, assisting the Nanticook Senior Center. Um, they did, they completed background investigations on three uniform applicants, uh, uniform patrol applicants. And, um, they provided an escort for the high school basketball team to the city limits for the conference championship. And they've also provided security at the Seaford High School during the vaccinations, uh, held recently. Um, under, under training, they, uh, back in February, they attended the clandest, clandestine meth lab training. Um, Deputy Chief Rappa and Detective Chambers attended that. And, uh, the Guardian Alliance Technologies Training, uh, also Deputy Chief Rappa and, uh, Detective Sergeant Mills attended that. Um, and tonight we voted, uh, on one of the chief's initiatives was to select the chief's advisor's report. And that continue, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, next we'll have Administration IT, Councilman Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the IT report, well, uh, Charles met with the developers of residents at the workplace to discuss the incentives. He participated in the call center technician interviews, accounting coordinator interviews, and public works inter, interviews. Uh, for the IT side of the city, they reconfigured the WSUS server. Uh, this allows us to manage and distribute updates throughout, through a management console. They, uh, they're working on the graphical information system configuration setup. They're working with the electrical department to install a can, a canary sys, software which allows users to read and manage data collected from the SCADA system, and it will allow retention and perpetuity. Um, administration is still working on the fiscal year 2022 budget, and they are still, um, negotiating with the department Teamsters. Um, they will be meeting on March 23rd, 23. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, next we'll have Code, Parks and Rec, Councilman Holland.
So for Parks and Recs, I think Fisher has some pictures for me, some progress, of course, our daughter's house. Flow to Dock and Gangway, we deliver today, and a schedule for placement, and the water tomorrow.
Paddling in the water next week.
Yes, sir. This is time for the summer.
It's gonna be great.
It's gonna be real nice.
All right, and for Panfor, uh, Parks and Recs, I'm busy with Panfor's summer slash summer season, and they met with the Sussex Tree Care about trimming trees in Williams Pond Park, and a meeting was held with Vice President of First State Pickleball Club to discuss details of possibly hosting a late spring new pickleball planet and all the workers' routine. And I will source the code, and out of 1,667 towed units, 1,283 rental license have been issued, and routine inspections are on, are ongoing, and they are in the process of building plans for Phase 2 of Montessori School, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much, next we have Electric, Councilman McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few highlights from the report. In regards to the crew, recently trimmed trees on Virginia and Cedar Avenue, as well as Bradford Street and Porter Street. They took Truck 11 to the body shop to get repaired. Uh, Greg Brook completed Week 7 of 8 at Lyman School. Uh, once he gets completed with, uh, Week Number 8, I believe we'll have him come through and see the council. Um, they worked on a street light, uh, on Nylon Boulevard Extended. As it relates to the director, he had his usual director's meeting, worked on FY22 budget, and, uh, had an AMI, AMI conference call. Over the next few weeks, uh, the goals will be to continue working in Mirrorfield 1, Phase 2B, continue working in Bel Air Multi-Family, and to pull the wire and set the transformer at the AUI Building, as well as finish the trimming, trimming the trees in Williams Pond Park. Uh, that's a few of the highlights, but the report's been submitted in its entirety, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much, and finally we have wastewater treatment plant, Public Works, Councilman King.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the report has been submitted in its entirety, I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights. I'll start with the Public Works Department. Um, Department's extremely busy, uh, the good news is that they have hired a new employee that will start on March the 15th. Uh, they still have one employee that's out on medical. Um, some of the activities going on throughout our community is the, you know, reading meters and disconnects. Um, they've hung pink tags, they've collected water samples for the state, they helped supply barricades for the vaccine events that we had at the high school. Um, they replaced water services on Shipley, they've done a lot of work on the alleys, uh, maintaining them. They pulled and worked on the lift station at the manor house. Uh, I'm gonna jump over, um, to the waste, wastewater treatment facility. Uh, everything is still pretty smooth with the additional county flow. Plant performance remains good, compost is for sale by appointment, uh, septage is up, and they replaced the upper belt on the filter press. Some of the things that are happening over the next two weeks. that are happening over the next two weeks, they're going to, working on the water service on Phillips. New service is going to be installed on State. Going to continue to work on alleys and get those cleaned up. They're installing new services to the lots on East Popular. Continue to pull, rebuild retirement living lift stations, and there, it's a continuous ongoing process. They're working on the, the clean outs from the smoke testing list, replace fire hydrants, and they continue to do all routine work. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody and all that you've done tonight and all the, covered a lot tonight, so I appreciate that. With that, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
Councilman McCoy, so move.
I got a motion. Do we have a second?
Councilman Henderson, I second.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, get your hands. Thank you. Good night.